Hey, everyone. Nice to be here. It is Monday, January 24th, 2022, it's seven o'clock. Students tell their last day of work in the meeting, seven building, much called the names of your Mrs. Fisher. I will note that Mrs. Fisher had a conflict this evening as excuse. Mr. Gayhart?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Ms. Stoltz?
Here.
Ms. Borpego?
Here.
We do have a call, and we will continue. I don't know if it's tonight's meetings and those recent statutes. Do we have any community participation other than what's on the agenda? I did not receive any written communications. Very expensive reading that. Can go to UOL travel request from FCC LA.
Hello. I'm Jenny Waymeyer. I'm a culinary arts instructor at the high school and also the FCC LA advisor. And with me tonight I have Katie Brower. What? Go ahead and tell me what it's about.
So I'm Katie Brower. I'm a senior this year. I'm the president of our local FCC LA chapter. I'm a regional representative as well as the state vice president of finance. I've been in FCC LA for three years and the past couple of years spent tough because of COVID in terms of traveling and going to in-person meetings. My sophomore year, we were able to travel to Dallas for our nationals and we're hoping to get in-person meetings back this year, hopefully with regionals and state, which is what I came here to talk about. I think that it's really important for our club to be able to go to state in person because that, for me, really solidified participating in the club and encouraging me to stay with it and honestly to run for state, which that's what got me in it. Going in person and being able to see all these other people in the club made me feel like I was kind of part of a bigger part of it all, as well as the people who'd be going are competing. And that shows that we are all super involved in the club and we're not going just to fool around or school or anything. Which I know could be a concern, but we're all, we're all competing. We put work into our projects and we compete in. We compete first at regionals and then we continue on to state at the Calhary. And if we perform well, we end up going to nationals, which is super cool. I remember when we went to nationals, my first year, we were the only chapter from Wisconsin that went. And so I think it's super cool that Elkhorn is that involved for our state. I think it's a good look for us to get in our club. And I know a lot of the seniors this year are going to be graduating or are not going to be able to come back. So I think it's super important to get those younger underclassmen super involved in an in-person meeting like state is, and that all occurs out of the key participating in the years to come.
And Katie has had quite great success for competitions. This year we had, you could choose in-person or online for our, what they call it, fall event. Third in the nation in culinary math. And with that came $10,000? A potential for a $10,000 scholarship from my university out of Kentucky. And we had two other students who, one student was first in the nation and another that was second. So we've had some really great success with FCC LA. And students like Katie and Randy are some of our best advertisements. They're some of the best advertisements that we have because they're just great kids and they just demonstrate what Elkhorn is all about. You see that you have our proposal up there, which includes travel beginning April 3rd, which is the last day of spring break, which speaks also to the dedication of our students who would like to go on Sunday. We have to go a day early because of Katie's responsibilities. They would come back usually, usually on Wednesday afternoon before evening. So it's jam-packed. We, of course, know that there is a possibility that the event could get canceled certainly because of COVID and DPI protocols. But again, we are hopeful that. Everybody in the club is so nice and very respectful, so.
Do you?
You trust them going away.
Do you need judges?
Yes. So there's, there's two separate events here. So let's talk about the two separate ones.
For the tasting, the owner can have someone else.
Well, I have. Well, we always need judges. Our annual event is February 25th. It's over at West Doshia. And yes, we always need judges. We have speaking competitions, mathematical competitions, and plenty of culinary events as well. And then the second proposal that we put in was to attend the food show. That's in Rosemont, Illinois. That's the Gordon Food Show. And as well, we haven't been able to go. I think it's been two or maybe three years. Yeah. It's just a really cool event for the kids to see because it's different vendors. It's like going to the home show when you're trying to build a house. So students get to go to different booths. And if they want to learn about tea, they can sample the tea and then learn about the costing and then get the information about it. And then what we do is we bring all that information back and we're hoping to revive our in-person restaurants in the spring.
It's been a good experience. Questions? President, you can use your phone, please.
There we go. There's me. Can you explain culinary math?
Yeah, so my first year in the club, sophomore year, is when I ended up competing in it the first time. And that year I got second place. It's basically a test you take online and it has to do with obviously culinary. But it's more on the ratios, pricing side. So you get some questions about what's the basic ratio for like a biscuit recipe? And you have to know the ratio of fats to flour. And then there's also if you have this much of an edible portion at a restaurant, how much should you price it for? So you get this percent of a profit and kind of that kind of side of it.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a lot of that.
I was asking on the side what it was.
I had to turn it wrong.
Randy can tell you what's more. Well, I thought like big bacon, Henry, like. I mean, if I had to change a recipe, I would have to make a $100 Google something. Use the conversion. Yeah, but that's quite impressive. And Katie's part of a class, this is my sixth year at Elkhorn, and there are five students in Katie's Culinary Four class, which is our top-tier class, that are actually taking an extra math class through Gateway so that they can be the first group of students to earn a baking certificate through Gateway Technical College. So they'll actually have a technical diploma from Gateway when they finish. So they put a lot of effort into it and I'm really proud of them. Very cool. And we will need chaperones if anybody needs to go to the food show. Always bring elastic. So you're looking at like 10 kids, but? Between 10 and 20. Okay. It'll depend. We have to talk to Gordon because we have some 18-year-olds and some 17-year-olds. They've been really good with us because our students are known to be very well behaved and respectful, so.
Other questions? The way is that prior policy, we do have to approve it since it's overnight. So we'll keep our motion to.
I move to approve the travel request from FCC LA as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So move the second into approve the travel request from the FCC LA as presented. Vocal vote, please. Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. All right, next is our minutes. Regular session test, your agenda, close to pass out. Questions, comments? Three none, but going separately. Looking for a motion on the regular.
I move to approve the minutes of the January 10th, 2022 regular school meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So move the second into approve the minutes of the January 10th, 2022 regular session school meeting as presented. Vocal vote, please. Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
Motion carried. Close session.
I move to approve minutes of January 10th, 2022, closed session school meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So move the second into approve the minutes of the January 10th, 2022, closed session school meeting as presented. Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Abstain.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Abstain.
And Ms. Borpego?
Abstain.
Motion carried. General and other fund bills, Mr. Trun?
The general and other fund bills this evening covered checks number 145117 through 145265, wire transfers 1177 through 1184, ACH check numbers 289 through 310, two voided checks, number 145102, 145233, a combined amount of $411,844. And then there's a memo providing some additional information on the bills packet. And then that's followed by a copy of the treasures report, which shows kind of cash flow, budget status, and then there's a graph that shows the cash flows.
Questions, Mr. Trun?
I have a few. On the baker glass for the middle school windows, was that just a window failure or due to age or was there some other reason why the glass?
They discovered it when they were cleaning the windows.
Oh.
So there was one on the first floor and one on the second floor.
Okay, so I don't know.
We're not sure how long they had been there.
Got it.
And then because it was the second floor, they also had a frame.
Yeah. Yeah, I have questions about why there's a lift.
Yeah.
Okay, so wasn't like damage or anything like that?
In terms of like a vandalism or something like that, we're not sure if it was. It happened some time ago.
Okay.
And we don't have cameras in the club that could have seen that kind of activity, so we did check around.
Yeah, yeah. And then just looking at the very last chart on the packet that you gave us showing the cash flow.
Yeah.
It was very, it was, I think it stood out to me that we're in a way better cash position this year at multiple points throughout the year than we have been before. Just wondering what you attribute that to and?
Great question. Glad someone knows that chart. The difference, quite honestly, you may recall when we were finalized this year's budget back in October, we were waiting to see if the government was going to announce some funding, the federal cares dollars.
Right.
And there was no announcement, so we never built it into our budget.
Okay.
That came on December 12th. It was $420,000.
Okay, so that explains the December number because I'm like, wow, that December number like.
That's why it jumped up.
Okay.
Yep.
But even at the other points too, like.
Yeah.
I mean, it follows the same trend, but it's still higher.
Yeah, we're a little bit. And part of that to carry over because we don't get all our open enrollment monies until the end of June.
Got it.
From the prior, then that carries over. Carries us through. But typically, December is the low point and we usually do things for catchable borrowing. But yeah, it was very odd when you see that.
Yeah.
Up tick.
Yeah. And then I have one other question. I noticed summer school expenditures, you know, in this year's budget. So with summer school expenditures, is that from this past year or is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Because of June, July.
I was wondering which budget year it followed, which, so whatever we're looking at was from this past year.
It would have been July of 21.
Okay, got it. All right, there we go.
Other questions, Mr. Trun?
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of January 24th, 2022. Check numbers 145117 to 145265. Wire numbers 1177 to 1184. ACH check numbers 289 to 310. An voided check numbers 145102 and 145233 in the combined amount of $411,844 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So move the second into approve the general and other fund bills of January 24th, 2022. Checks number 145117 to 145265. Wire numbers 1177 to 1184. ACH check numbers 289 to 310. An voided check numbers 145102 and 145233 in the combined amount of $411,844 as presented. Vocal vote, please. Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
Important discussion items. Student report. Look at that.
Yep.
We got it.
Wait, you can go then.
All right.
So at the high school, the high school earned the AP Computer Science Applications Female Diversity Award for expanding the female participation in computer science. So I thought that was pretty cool. And then the Golden Alka Sui passed around again. They went from the kitchen staff to Lily because she always says Christmas thinking when she gets her lunch. And I know her and she's a super sweet girl. She really does it. And then on February 22nd to the 24th, Alex Cheer team will be hosting a cheer camp for the sixth or eighth graders. And the FFA held their district political leadership development events today. That was going on at the high school before. And then Macy Cruz plays first in prepared speaking, Rebecca Robinson plays second in creed, and I play second in next step.
Woo!
Congratulations.
Congrats, thanks.
That's exciting.
Yeah. And then at the middle school, there was a dance hall for the seventh graders on Friday. The annual autism support team, Chili and Supercop, we held at the middle school on February 17th from 5:00 to 7:00. And a group walked on the Nicholas surgery fitness trail to explore the possibility of making bluebird houses. And the Builders Pub is going to make 24 nest boxes to prolong the trail. At Jackson, the high school and graduating students went back to Jackson to talk to the third and fifth graders about high school and college plans. So that was really sweet. The Jackson PTA donated a book vending machine to the Jackson library and it's now officially running. And the Jackson Student Council harvested their hydroponically grown lettuce. The students were actually able to try it during lunch and I heard they all loved it a lot.
Was it 26 pounds in their first harvest?
Of lettuce?
It was a lot of lettuce.
That's a lot of lettuce.
There is a lot of lettuce, yeah.
Do you guys ever sell it?
I don't know about Jackson, but that was like their first time. They just let a bunch of kids try it, yeah. Yeah, but at the high school, they do sell the microgreens.
Did it partnership with the food service department? So they purchased that.
Got it.
Allowed for that to grow.
And that's the vending machine where?
Yeah, that vending machine's awesome. I don't really know. I just, I thought.
It's how to get the kids to eat the lettuce. It's how they're growing.
Yeah. I thought you were going to say the bun. Westside is having their virtual lip sync battle again this year. Students can submit videos of themselves lip syncing to their favorite songs on Flipgrid. Fourth graders made clay frogs in our class and Mrs. Cruz's class played Hunger, Hunger Hippo in the gym when it was too cold to go outside. At Tibbetts, they had career dress up day where all the students dressed up as what they want to be when they grow up. And the first graders worked together in reading to find the main idea of details. That's the kids with the yellow sheet on the floor. And the kindergarteners just finished up their snowman week where they had a tree or activity relating to snowmen every day. At Options, on Thursday, Options is hosting an open gym where students can come play basketball, life-size Jenga, and more. Last Friday, Options had a blood drive in their gym and two of their principals in the future donated. And in their physical education blended learning class, the students participated in a virtual yoga class. And then in Career and College Academy, back in December, the seventh students completed the certification for the work ethic development. It was part of their new employability skills curriculum. Excellent.
Great. Thank you. Recommendations of the district administrator, personnel. All right, we've got five of your items on the personnel sheet. First, two, actually three retirements. Patty Woods, who's served as our district connections coordinator, which is probably one of the more unique positions and great positions, which was created by the school board years ago. I'm going to, and Patty Woods has fulfilled that role for years. Linda Blackwell, who's been serving as a teacher in fifth grade at Tibbetts for years. And Stephen Horns is a high school head cook. I want to thank them for all of their service to this school this year and congratulate them on reaching that pinnacle in their career. Then we have another number of other items on the personnel sheet. If there's any you'd like to pick to or looking in the descriptions or. Questions for Mr. Tebbott? Hearing me.
I move to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for January 24th, 2022, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented.
There's a second? Second. So move the second into approve the personnel recommendation sheet for January 24th, 2022, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented. Vocal vote, please. Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
Motion carried. School gifts. All right, we've got three gifts to present this evening. The Sharing Center has donated two boxes of children's boots and hats valued at $200. Kevin Monte has donated $1,000 to Tibbetts Elementary to the use of discretion of Mr. Fox. And Casey's General Stores has donated $38.60 to Tibbetts Elementary to the use of discretion of Mr. Fox. Thank you again. Question about private generous gifts?
Move to accept the generous school gifts as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So move the second into approve the generous gifts of the Sharing Center, Kevin Monte, and Casey's General Stores as presented. Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
Second reading of revised policies. All right, I did not receive any further feedback regarding the inventories or the use of the fitness center. If there's any questions, happy to pull those up and we can go through those. Otherwise, they're ready for a follow-up. All right, looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve new policy 683 inventories and revise policy 829 use of fitness center as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the new policy 683 inventories and revise policy 829 use of the fitness center as presented. Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego? All right, a couple of announcements. Moving this evening, if you pull up the. Doctor, do you want to? We received a thank you for the Chamber of Commerce. That they wanted to share. That was included in your board notes. That was for assisting with the community Christmas meals, which they based it out of the high school to assemble all the meals, put that together. And then we had a number of students help and community members. There was something else. And he just pulled it.
Yeah, he was.
But that was a big success again this year. It's a great event. Another announcement, we have a need to schedule a policy committee meeting. I wanted to see if February 14th at noon would work for the policy committee members. All right, we could look at, let's see, is the 21st the following Monday? All right, so we'll plan on February 21st at noon. All right, we'll check that later. And then the last item, ah, you didn't share this, like, you didn't share. Our esports team, oh no, defeated their state championship in Mario Smash Brothers. And if you didn't see the link, there's a couple of, you know, I don't think we've had Mr. Dolly over here. So I'll go ahead and share this with you. But Mr. Dolly, one of our computer science business teachers, is also the head of the esports organization for the state of Wisconsin. So he organizes the event and it's grown quite a bit. There were a few.
Square face lets you run your flag like it's been.
Loose channels, yeah.
So you can have some charity and see it as well.
You attend hundreds of the best athletes from around the state, effective as college, they need to see who's the best. But if you need a basketball or a fan for this one, just control where to head to. Over here, we're going to try to add more from the Wisconsin esports state championship. We have an eight-week regular season with a two-week postseason. Today, they offer you to showcase the talents on a large table. For a lot of my students, I know that there's very few activities that they participate in. Like this is the one thing that I can access. Esports is used as a way in order to have our students experience. For any of their learning, their soft skills, their employability skills, their teamwork, collaboration, accountability, time management. So they're learning a lot of those really important skills working as a member of these teams. They're not participating in the team sports, if they're not engaged in like tackle or FPLA or any of those other big activities that works together in our school, this is their opportunity to help at least develop some of those skills. Kids that are doing broadcasts, are doing play-by-play. We have others that are running our annual screen, so there are literally three live channels next door right now. If there's any school that's watching this and are considering, you know, getting that board that you have in your ass that maybe they want to play, don't be afraid to be a teacher that doesn't know the game. For the most part, we just need, but like an active adult that cares about giving this opportunity for kids. And that's ultimately what it is, to just give them another opportunity to experience, fight, and everything. What a cool event. And that was a great reporting by Brian Trossel. Today, it also included breakout sessions for parents and teachers on how esports fits into college life and also mental health.
Okay, so the large event, Mr. Dolly represented the district very well. The students did well. Another, there was another local news broadcast as well. If you look at it, they mentioned there were 12 colleges that are recruiting students for their esports teams. And yeah, so Mr. Eislerl, Mr. Dolly, they do a great job with that. Last I checked, we were close to almost 100 students involved in esports at some level, which is almost 10% of the whole state. It's great.
Mr. I was really happy about that today. He was showing off his trophy that he got.
That Mr. I got.
I was just saying, Mr. I, that esports team got. It was cool.
Good, yeah, they really get into it. It's a great opportunity for the kids. It fits right within that whole computer science pathway, something I would add to that AP recognition. I think that the whole computer science development starts all the way back in kindergarten with that Project Beataway program where 100% of our students in kindergarten up through eighth grade have computer science on an annual basis and at least, you know, exposure to that. So I think it really helps break down those barriers that would traditionally exist within the interest level within those programs. So it's nice to see that working and paying off. And we're a really unique district. Last time I looked, this was several years ago, there were only three actual computer science certified teachers in the state. A lot of the teachers, you know, have the business certification and happen to teach computer science. But Mr. Dolly, Mr. Eislerl, and Ms. Struie all have the computer science certification, which according to, you know, last time I looked, that's 25% of all the computer science teachers in the state happen to be in our.
Wow.
Pretty, but I'll at least be fully certified.
Yeah.
Background, which all three came from non-traditional, non-education pathways where they work in industry, startup. So that's something unique and I want to thank all of them for their efforts. Person? Oh. We do have a closed session afterwards.
I move to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parent transparency, discussing employee contracts. The school board will reconvene in open session for action as appropriate regarding closed session business and/or to adjourn.
Is there a second? So moved a second into adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.2851C, discussing employee contracts. The school board will reconvene, will reconvene in open session for action as appropriate regarding closed session business and/or to adjourn.
Mr. Gayhart?
Ah, yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.